Start out the season just now before.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Getting late, don't get your trouble getting early.
Absolutely.
People ain't paying manage.
Ain't telling you.
Hey, Ms. Marie. She'll be back, she'll be right back in.
I'd like to first start off by saying good evening to everyone. Thank you all so much for showing your concerns about the business of the city of Greensboro. As always, we'll open up our meeting with prayer. This is a meeting that you wish not to participate in will allow you to excuse yourself at this time. If not, we'll proceed with prayer. Oh gracious heaven and father, we love you, we magnify you, God, we rejoice in your name. And God, we're so grateful and thankful, God, that you've allowed us to come together one more time, God, to discuss the business of your city of Greensboro, Georgia. And God, we ask on tonight, God, that you would allow your Holy Spirit, God, to rest root and abide in this place. And God, give us direction, God, show us where it is that you would have us to go. And not just where you want us to go, God, but show us how it is you would have us to get there. Bless the people of this city, but not just of this city, bless the people of the United States of America. God, in your son Jesus' name we do pray, amen and thank God. Let the minutes reflect that everyone is present on tonight. And I'm searching for the regular session minutes, make one regular session minutes. Do you have, is that what we're waiting on?
Yes.
So we'll skip down to number four on the agenda. And that's the report from Kendrick Ward. It's Ms. Kendrick here.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
So I'm here tonight to present the road closure for what is our new summer concert name, Mo Tunnel name. We're doing a revamp of the name for the summer concert. It was previously known as picking on the green. That's when we started as a bluegrass and like a singer songwriter kind of picking thing, but now we're going to expand the horizon of the sound of the music. So Moonlight on Main is what we're calling it. So I'm asking for a road closure for Friday evening, the sixteenth, starting at one o'clock. That would be in front of Festival Hall and then down Green Street to block behind Festival Hall to Bank South. And that would start at one o'clock to set up the stage. And then at four thirty, we would block the remainder of North Main Street to load in the rest of the chairs and things like that, too.
Any questions coming from the council?
This is June sixteenth?
Yes, it's a Friday evening.
We'll also shoot fireworks. Did you say that? Did I not hear?
I didn't say it yet.
Oh, you didn't say, oh, I'm sorry.
But I did just send in the contract for fireworks that evening. So that is in and once we get the deposit, we're done. The mayor is shooting fireworks.
Any other questions coming, any questions coming from the council? No questions coming from the council. And it's entertain a motion to approve the request for especially moonlight on Main, closing in these tours on North Main Street and Green Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known, I raise your right hand. Thank you so much, unanimous decision. Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. Ms. Kell, before you come up, I would like for Mr. Cronin to come up and give us a report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I don't really have a lot. I mean, everything's going smooth right now. We training with the county once every month, our second meeting each month. I'm not a big public speaker anyway.
I understand.
But um, we, we meet with the county on our second meeting every month, do training with them, cross training, and that helps us get our hours. We've been training, we've met with them three Saturdays so far this year, cross training with them down at the Station Eight, Walker Church, doing training down there and just, I mean, everything's going good right now. Short, a little short on volunteers, but you know, it's, it's a dying breed.
What do you think, Mr. Cronin, that we could do as a city to increase our volunteer numbers or to entice people to volunteer?
Um, I mean, I'm, I mean, we could put a sign out in front of the station, you know, volunteers wanted or whatever. I mean, O'Conne County has a sign in front of theirs and, you know, different counties have signs, you know, asking for volunteers, I mean, that's about all you can do. But it's so many hours it takes to get them certified that, you know, people with, you know, forty or fifty hour a week jobs now to do those hours, you're, you know, it's two, three nights a week. You're away from your home till ten, you know, classes usually last to about ten o'clock at night. Then, you know, a lot of people just don't feel they have the time for it.
City manager, what are we currently paying out, paying out volunteer?
Twenty-five of.
It's thirty, thirty a call. And I'm not sure about the details.
And then at the end of the year, we take a, do some ratio to the number of meetings that they attended and we give them a Christmas bonus.
You said twenty-five or thirty a call?
It's thirty a call.
Thirty a call?
Yes.
Do you know how long we've been paying them, that city manager?
Uh, probably.
Thirty, it was, I think whenever I started back in two thousand and twelve here, it was twenty or twenty-five, I think it was twenty-five a call. And then up until just a couple year or two ago.
I'd say two, three years ago.
Yeah, it went to thirty.
We bumped it up to thirty.
So, I mean, that's, it's a lot more than most places give anyway.
Is it?
You know, I was, I was in Oglethorpe County for years and you spent your own money to go to a fire. So, I mean, what we get, we appreciate.
How many calls are we averaging a month?
We've been, I'd say it's around ten, right around ten calls a month right now. You know, the county helps out a lot, you know, with them being full time, so we don't make as many alarm calls and, you know, which most of those get canceled, but you know, you never know when an alarm's going to be a real thing. So we try to make all we can, you know, whenever there's people available.
What about equipment, Mr. Cronin?
Um, we're good on equipment right now, I believe. I got to set up an appointment to get the tanker looked at. We got a engine light just come on on it. I'm on, get a guy to hook his computer up to it and see what it's showing, you know, and then we'll go from there. But I mean, it's still, you know, in service, so.
Last time we talked, I think you mentioned something about uniform, did you? Were you able to get those on?
Yes, yes, yeah, we, I've got, I think, five sets of turnout gear on order now. It takes about six months to get them, so we should have those in probably another two months.
So you've been in the chief for a while now, how are you enjoying it?
It's going pretty good. I mean, I'm, I don't have any complaints really. I mean, as I told somebody, you know, somebody had to take it, so I stepped up and did it. It can't run itself.
Any more questions coming from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. David Cronin as the fire chief and take the interim title off. He's been doing an awesome job. We lost our fire chief, probably going to be about a year. And he was the assistant chief and he did everything that we have asked him to do. I went down, did some training and different things with him and helped him out. Talked to you and Larry about the equipment and some of the suits and stuff that we have got. And I think it would be a great thing to do and he said he would accept the job and the title.
All right, council, you heard the request coming from Councilman Smith to make Mr. David Cronin our fire chief and take the interim, in front of his name. Any further discussions on that?
Second, no.
Nope. You're second.
I entertain a motion now a second.
Motion now a second.
Motion, you're second.
You motion.
He motion.
De motion. De motion.
He's second.
Well, it's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much, unanimous decision. Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Yes, sir, y'all have a good evening.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Kell Hammond's approval of Greensboro Streetscape Phase Five. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it actually is five. We'll explain that as we move through. Good evening, mayor and council. And tonight I have for you guys a new TAP award from the Georgia Department of Transportation and for you to review and authorize the documents for. But I thought I would begin by just kind of reviewing what this new award is for. So you should have in your packets a sheet that looks like this with a little chart on it. So far, all of the TAP awards that I've discussed with you previously were related to the project area for Streetscape Phase Four. That includes the project along East and West Broad Street and also a section of West Street on its way down to Green Street. So all of these awards have been related to that project area. Tonight, we actually have received funding for a new project area. And that project area is going to include Court Street and East Street in downtown. And the funding that we've received is on the second page of that document. And that funding is for the preliminary engineering and pre-construction activities that are needed for the project. So you can see this, the TAP grants are eighty-twenty grants, so eighty percent GDOT funding, twenty percent local funding. And you can see that we will receive two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of funding from GDOT with a local match of seventy thousand dollars for a total funding amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Also included a map for you so you can kind of see the project area for this newest phase. Previously, we've been talking about the yellow section on Broad Street. And tonight, we're moving into a new project area, this little red section along Court and East Streets. So I think this is exciting for a couple of reasons. The biggest one is that these projects are so slow moving and take so long to get from point A to point B as you're moving through the process. So I think what's good about this is we're going to have another project in GDOT's pipeline. This one will be a little bit, it'll be a step behind the one that we've been working on previously. So it'll help queue up another project. So once we're finishing up Phase Four, we'll have Phase Five ready to go. So I think that's really promising for the city. So the action that I would request at the council tonight is that you authorize Mayor Williams to digitally sign the GDOT project framework agreement. That's basically the main grant agreement from, for the city to accept this funding. And that document has been reviewed by the city attorney's office. And so I'll defer to the city attorney, I think he has some comments for you on the document.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, members of the council, as you know, we've been in the process of updating our audits. One of the requirements of the grants is for you to be updated with your audits. We will have a conversation with the Department of Transportation regarding that for the mayor's signature. So, Mr. Mayor, if one of your council members chooses to make a motion to allow this to be signed, we'd ask you let it be continued on the attorney's conversation with GDOT to make sure everything is right.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've heard the request coming from Ms. Hammond. I entertain a motion at this time to accept or deny the approval or to allow me to sign the GDOT framework agreement.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
I got one too.
Um, what's the timeframe on this? Once he's signed, how long would it take for it? I know we, you're asking for a local funding of twenty percent, which is seventy thousand. What would be the timeframe on him signing and we actually have to write a check out for seventy thousand?
Right, well, first of all, this, this will be a reimbursement grant. So we'll, when we start receiving bills on the project, we pay the bill in full and then we submit for reimbursement and receive eighty percent back. So we have to pay it in full and get back the eighty percent. But to answer your question, even once we start activities, we probably have several months of just procuring, going through procurement so that we can hire an engineer to do these preliminary engineering and pre-construction drawings. So I think it's easy to say that it would push into the next fiscal year and probably well into the next fiscal year.
Okay. That was my biggest thing, we got a lot going on financially. Of course, I love the police and the air guard and stuff. So I definitely didn't want to say we're going to sign a check for seventy thousand tonight. And we've been saying we can't do, you know, other departments serve them with their capacity or what they're in need of at the same time.
Right, and even, even when we start spending out of this, it's not all in one lump sum. It's over the course of, you know, spread out month to month, monthly invoices and then monthly reimbursement requests through the grant program. So it's not like we have to come up with seventy thousand dollars all at once. It could very likely stretch into the following fiscal year.
To my, for clarity, Councilman Smith, these funds would come out of T-sploss and not sploss. So it'll be two different accounts versus just one account.
All right, so we'll get eighty percent of the seventy thousand back that percent, right?
No, sir, seventy thousand is the local match.
You said we'll get reimbursed.
Right, we pay the bill and, and we get back eighty percent of what we've spent. So that we will, it's anticipated that to do the preliminary engineering and pre-construction phase of the project will cost about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of that, we'll be able to reimburse for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is the eighty percent. But the local match is the seventy thousand dollars, it's twenty percent. So it's on this, it's on this sheet of paper.
All right.
Any more questions coming from the council? No more questions? I entertain a motion to accept or deny. No motion coming from the council?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Been motioned and second to accept. All those in favor, let it be known, I raise your hand, right hand. All those that refuse? Three-two count, it's approved. Thank you, Ms. Hammond.
All right, thank y'all.
Brings us down to number six on the agenda, unfinished business. Unfinished business. Pay raises going on unfinished, will you go address that, city manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council. We have had a opportunity to review our finances and we are in position to move forward with the raises for our employees. The manager, Mr. Postel, did budget a five percent increase for our employees in the current budget. And we think it is time now to go forward with that.
That's all I have. Councilman Moore, do you have any unfinished business?
I have another unfinished business, Mr. Mayor and council. We also placed in you all's packet, we did an analysis of our current utility bills. We had our utility clerks provide me update where we are. Currently, we have four hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-two cent outstanding balance for our, from our customers. We have balances going back to even twenty seventeen. We think it's time now to go ahead and provide our customers, our constituents ample enough time, sixty days notice to go ahead and get these outstanding bills current. We have a sample letter that we would like to share with you all that we will be mailing out to our customers and giving them notice that they would need to go ahead and get their bills current. We also have, if there's any financial hardship, there are some options for these customers. But we think that with some of the financial responsibilities that we need here in our city, it's also important that we address outstanding bills, utility bills.
All right, council, you heard the request coming from Mr. Sims to send letters out enforcing the payment of past due bills. I entertain a motion now a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known, I raise your right hand. All those don't agree? Four-one. Mr. Larry, any unfinished business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bledsoe is here to give us an update on our ongoing Adrian Circle flooding issue. We'd like to take that.
Mr. Bledsoe, we'll take it this time.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I, my name's Mike Bledsoe, I'm an engineer. I was asked to review our options to potentially improve flooding conditions along Adrian Circle and Town Creek east of the city. In general, the area upstream of Adrian Circle, you know, collects water from about two thousand and five hundred acres that drain along Adrian Circle. It's, it's, the general observations are it's relatively flat along Adrian Circle. It's in a federal flood hazard area, which means a flooding event is likely once every one hundred years. But since the two thousand six to two thousand and nine drought, it seems like we've got these significant flooding events more and more frequently. You know, I've observed it, I know the city of Greensboro observed it, and it's, it's common in the state to have observed it. So, so these, these events that these residents are seeing appear to be coming more and more frequently. And, and I think what we're getting are these flash floods and these real quick downbursts of a lot of rain. And that overwhelms our, our infrastructure. You know, part of what I was also asked is what would the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division and Army Corps of Engineers allow the city to do reasonably to improve the flow along this section of the stream? And after talking with those individuals, we can work within the stream bed and the stream buffer, you know, by hand, chainsaws, bush axes, machetes, and just our hands to pick up and remove debris. I've prepared a brief report that sort identifies the area, illustrates the drainage area, also, you know, the noted flood hazard areas, both on the federal mapping, FEMA mapping, as well as what Greene County's GIS has basically transferred that same map on to the county map. And then some photographs from the actual stream bed. And what we're allowed to remove is the dead and dying debris, which are these old trees that have fallen into the water, you know, trash. When one tree falls, other trees will tend to collect and pile up on those. So that's what we can go in there, pick up and move. We can't bring a backhoe or, you know, bulldozer into the creek. We have to remove it, you know, with cables and winches from outside the stream buffer. Additionally, if, if you look in photograph number four, you know, this flooding starts downstream and it, and it works its way upstream. So the culvert sort of right in front of the driveway to the wastewater treatment plant is a Georgia DOT culvert on State Route forty-four. And two of the three barrels are significantly impacted by sediment and some debris. I think it would be very reasonable to request Georgia DOT to maintain this particular culvert and allow, you know, those two barrels that are impacted to be freed. And, you know, that's not an expense necessarily to the city. And work our way upstream toward Adrian Circle to, to make these improvements. So immediately behind the homes on Adrian Circle, while that's where they're seeing the flooding, the problem is occurring, is starting further downstream. And one potential piece of that could be this culvert. So we need to make it, you know, a hundred percent free and clear to allow water to flow through it. And then, you know, working upstream, we would identify, we could identify and remove these snags, which are the, you know, the tree stumps or trees that have fallen in and captured other limbs and leaves. Because that just serves to slow down the creek, just like any clogwood in your drain, so to speak. And the difference is, this is handwork and it's, it can be expensive, you know. And, and I've, I've talked to some contractors, you know, the daily rate for a crew that would handle this, you know, is anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a day, okay? And it would take a lot of days depending on what parts of the stream we chose to kind of free and clear, you know, open up, remove the dead stuff. It's recommended that you don't go in there and clip and prune everything to create a clean barrel. But once you clip it, But once you clip it, it's gonna blossom out even more. And, and then you're on a regular maintenance schedule. And I don't think that's what we should do in, in this stream. I think you should keep it as natural as possible. But if, if limbs do fall and start to collect things like you can see in photographs one through three, you know, that's what we can remove. And, um, there's some old concrete block, um, uh, pillars, I don't know if there was an old sewer crossing or maybe an old bridge. Any, there's a couple of those, you know, in the creek and the water's having to go around them and then they're in the way to collect, um, trash and debris. I think we would have to seek permission to remove that. I think it's very reasonable to remove that. But that's another, just one thing that I saw in the stream. And, um, I don't think that's going, you know, even if we do get in there, we spend the money, we remove the, the debris that's in the creek, I think there will still be events that cause this water to, to pack up into these yards. I think it's, it's a really, really large drainage basin. Just downstream of this twenty-five hundred acre basin, we collect the central part of Greensboro. So it's, it's a big creek collecting a lot of water, which is, you know, why it's noted on the federal maps as a, as a flood area. Doing the, 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 sort of the restoration that we, that I've described about removing the, the debris in the creek, I think that will help. Some events are more of the routine events, but it, it, it won't cause the flooding to go away. I think, um, if that's ever a choice or an option, I mean, it's a, it's a grander scale of a project with, with sort of regional detention ponds, because a lot of the, the old city are the, you know, the original infrastructure of the city is, you know, is not like new subdivisions with detention ponds. And, and, um, so we would have to, you know, look at regional type solution as opposed to, you know, targeting a section of the stream bed, um, in terms of, of flood, you know, reduction. I think, um, it's, you know, it seems easy to go in there and open up a barrel and make the water go faster, but it's, it's, you know, these, these streams are highly protected and, you know, they're a system that, that are, that are, um, you know, people aren't necessarily meant to be in. And, um, but we do, we get in them all the time. And, you know, all the yards are maintained, everything that the citizens can do, it appears to be in done. Their ditches are clear, their pipes are open. Um, it's just the sheer volume of water coming downtown Creek that is, and, and certain factors downstream, you know, that really don't have anything to do with Adrian Circle that are causing this water to, you know, start to slow down and pile up during these, you know, really monster rain events. And we've just had a lot of them. You know, we didn't have any from oh-six to oh-nine and, you know, and we're catching up a little bit is what, is one way to look at it. But, um, we can go more and more detail if you need me to. But, um, what we're allowed to do as a city is to hand-remove non-mechanized equipment can be in the stream bed. And we can't, um, there's a tree with a stump that's fallen in, we've gotta saw it off at the stump, leave all the roots in place and not, you know, expose bare soil, you know. So that's kind of the, the limit. We can clip it all, but we can't disturb the, the bank or the bottom of the creek.
Thank you, Mr. Bledsoe. Um, any questions coming from the council?
I have one question. First of all, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and the city manager for staying on the project. The next question I would have to, uh, the city manager, could we possibly go ahead and get in touch with Georgia DOT to seek a schedule to two, uh, I think you said buffers out by Town Creek?
Sure.
And then to, um, could we look at seeing about some contract numbers on different companies? See what it costs to bring back to the council to kind of make that decision? Because I think, you know, citizens down there have been questioning, asking about it for years. And now that we finally got a study and got some information going, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions coming from the council?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, either to you or the city manager. We done talked about this, you know, several times in the past. So, so we're, we're looking at, this is a hundred-year flood plan area we're talking about, correct?
Yes, sir, that's what's illustrated on, say, the federal flood map is, is a special hazard event that has a one percent per annum.
So, so what am I hearing, Mr. Mayor, that we are looking at maybe trying to find funds to do this project?
Looking to see, I think we owe it to our citizens in that area to do our due diligence, um...
I agree, I agree with you one hundred percent. But we have things on this table that we unagreed to fund that we haven't. And we come and, you know, bring something else. I don't have no problem with this. But I'd have a problem with leaving other stuff off the table, taking on, taking on other projects before we fund projects that we have on the table.
So the next question would be, what, what particular thing are you talking about that we haven't done?
I don't like to sound like no broken record, Mr. Mayor, but I think I, I mean, you had, had the conversation, but talking about our city vehicles.
That hasn't been left off the table. City manager and I just discussed earlier today, um, about purchasing vehicles.
You talked about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you could talk about it on and on.
Would go further, I told them that I would sign the contract to get calls. So there's nothing on the table that we haven't done.
So were you gonna share that with us tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Anything else coming from the council? Counsel, I entertain a motion, uh, to give the city manager permission to put in bid, or to search for those contractors that may be able to, to help us with this area down in Adrian Circle, or the creek, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those that deny? Four-one vote. Thank you so much, Mr. Bledsoe.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
We stopped on Larry, unfinished business?
No, nothing.
City attorney, unfinished business?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, Councilman Moore, unfinished business? City manager, unfinished business?
Vehicles? Um, yes, mayor, council. The mayor also asked, well, you all also directed myself, as well as, um, Mr. Postel, to look at moving forward with what you all had approved on purchasing the vehicles. Uh, we've had several meetings, uh, identifying the funding sources to move forward with that. And we would like to move forward with what you all have approved on getting the vehicles, uh, for our public safety at this time.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
City clerk, unfinished business? Councilman Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilman Neal?
No.
There is unfinished business, are we doing that with new business, Mayor, personnel?
I got new business.
Okay, all right. Brings us down to number seven, new business. I don't have any new business at this time. Councilman Moore?
Oh, nothing. No, sir.
City attorney?
Mr. Mayor and council, I do have two items of new business I need to discuss with you, but they do deal with personnel and I would ask you to allow me to give you those reports to executive session with you at this time.
Thank you, sir. City manager?
No, sir.
City clerk? Councilman Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilman Neal?
No, sir.
All right. Brings us down to number eight, public comments. Do we have any public comment cards? No public comments? I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
For two personnel matters.
For two personnel matters.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, you all give us just a moment.